The time is 6:00 PM, so we are ready to begin. Today is Thursday, May 18th. This is the regular board meeting for the Norwood City School District. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bimonthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we've discussed fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board meetings, we encourage you to attend, watch, and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present. All right, I'd like to invite everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 1.04 is the adoption of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll motion to adopt the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, just a couple of items of business. 1.05, this is our minutes for the regular meeting, April 20th. 1.06, these are the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting, May 9th. 1.07, minutes from committee, May 9th. And 1.08, these are the minutes from the special meeting on May 9th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, items 1.05 to 1.08?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, with those approved, we can move on to item two. These are our presentations, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Ronan.
Thank you, Madam President. We would like to recognize our 2023 Teacher of the Year, Emily Hutchinson. Emily, I'd like you to stand up, plus your colleagues who nominated you. Stand up and be recognized. And Emily, we'd like you to come down because the board would like to recognize you. And as you're coming down, I'm going to read a little bit about you. She's a master educator who cares deeply about everyone she encounters. She's a lifelong learner. She always knows what each child needs. She takes time to get to know them. And she's not just a teacher of young children. She's mentored several of our Norwood teachers. She's a valued peer, friend, mentor, coach, and counselor. And I think Kelly wants to get a picture of our board president, or in fact, everyone if you'd like. Let's get a great picture of our Norwood Teacher of the Year. And I feel badly, I did not move the picture on. And while the picture is up, I want to mention that she was honored at the Hamilton County Education Service Center Celebrate Excellence Breakfast with all the educators from the region. She is pictured with Anthony Munoz, who served as the Master of Ceremony. And she got a great plaque, so congratulations, Emily. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, and congratulations to Ms. Hutchinson. All right, and now we are moving on to 2.02. This is our Rising Stars presentation, and Mrs. Chusson and Ms. Havlin are coming.
Thank you, Madam President. We are thrilled tonight to recognize our Rising Stars for the month of May. We're going to start with Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary Schools Rising Star student. And when I call your name, you're going to come down here to receive a certificate and stand in front so we can say great things about you. So first, we'll start with Isabel Ivy Codwell. All right, down here, I have Mrs. Cole. We've chosen Ivy Codwell for our preschool Rising Star. This is Ivy's first year in preschool, and she has grown tremendously. Ivy is a sweet and smart student who tries her best at everything she does. Ivy is a great role model to her peers and is always doing what is expected of her throughout the classroom day. She makes sure all of her peers are included in play and loves using her imagination. Ivy has grown so much socially since beginning preschool and loves coming to school each day. She enjoys bringing her teacher leaves and dandelions that she gathers on her way to schools. Ivy loves to come and peek and play games. She is so excited to go to kindergarten in the fall. We are so proud of you, Ivy. Okay, right there, we're going to have some other students join you.
Norwood View Elementary, Elementary Schools Rising Star student for May is Stephanie Campos Barrios. The fourth grade teachers at Norwood View have chosen Stephanie as their May Rising Star student. Stephanie is a wonderful student that exemplifies respect, commitment, and integrity. Stephanie is respectful to others. She is always willing to help classmates and is kind to everyone. Stephanie is always prepared for class. She has been such a great example to the other students. Stephanie has a strong desire to do well and is willing to put in the great, sorry, is willing to put in the extra effort needed to be successful. She doesn't hesitate to ask questions when she doesn't understand the content being taught. Stephanie is very kind and respectful to her teachers, other students, and the staff at Norwood View. We are very proud of Stephanie. We know that she will continue to work hard and be successful for many years to come. Congratulations.
Williams Avenue Elementary Schools Rising Star student for May is Harper Kelch. Harper is a tremendous student for several reasons. First, Harper first and foremost has an incredible work ethic. Often, she asks if there's more that she can do. Harper is very conscientious of her work and takes her work very seriously. She never hesitates to ask for clarification. Besides her super work ethic, she is a caring classmate with a big heart. Harper is always there for the people around her, student or adult alike. She's open-minded, compassionate, and not afraid to speak her mind. When she believes in a cause, she's willing to speak up and defend it no matter what other people may think. Harper is one to watch in the future. She will definitely make an impact on the world. She is creative, artistic, and wise. She hopes to use these skills when she is older to make a difference. Harper aspires to one day work with animals when she is older, especially endangered species. The Norwood Montessori Schools Rising Star student for May is Wayland Beeheimer.
Wayland Beeheimer is the Norwood Montessori Schools Rising Star for the month of May. Wayland is a shining example of a Montessori because he exemplifies our classroom peace promise every day. First, he takes care of himself by always striving to follow our classroom expectations. We can always count on him to work hard and participate. Wayland takes care of our environment by handling the materials responsibly and always does his part to keep our room clean and beautiful. Finally, he takes care of all living things by treating everyone with respect and by being kind no matter what. Wayland has learned so much during this year as a student, as a friend, and as a Montessori and thank you, Wayland, for all of your hard work and dedication. Congratulations.
Norwood Middle School Stars Rising Star student for May is Kason Howard. Norwood Middle School is proud to recognize Kason Howard for May's Rising Star. Kason is a very responsible student who does everything with a fantastic attitude and a smile. Kason has shown tremendous growth this year academically. He's dedicated to his work as a learner and is goal-oriented. He does a fantastic job of interacting with his peers and staff. All of his teachers truly enjoy having him in class. Kason is on the trajectory to accomplish many wonderful things in his life that will benefit those around him. We couldn't be more proud of this student. Congratulations, Kason, for making Norwood City School District great.
Norwood High School Rising Star student for May is Michaela Bryce. Norwood High School would like to recognize more Michaela Bryce as May's Rising Star. Michaela has attended Norwood City Schools since preschool at Sharpsburg. What makes Michaela a standout student at NHS? Her teachers say she has a great work ethic, is positive, and enthusiastic in class. She has a great sense of humor, makes connections easily, and enjoys learning. Her challenging schedule does not prevent her from maintaining high marks in her classes. Michaela loves to read and hopes to become a high school English teacher someday. Michaela's favorite thing about Norwood is the kindness of all of her teachers. She is looking forward to next year, one step closer to her dreams of graduation. Congratulations.
And next, we have the Norwood Athletic Rising Star, Murphy Peter. Murphy is a grad committee senior and has been a star during his senior campaign. He is a street sport athlete. He is a member of the Norwood RC golf team and is all Miami Valley Conference District qualifier as a wrestler. But today, we are recognizing Murphy for his season on the baseball diamond. He plays multiple positions, catcher, pitcher, and third base. He is second in the league in strikeouts and has an earned run average of 3.25 as a pitcher. At the plate, he is hitting a .455. In addition to his fantastic statistics, he is one of the leaders on the team and well-respected amongst other teams citywide. Congratulations, Murphy. This is time that the board members would like to come around and congratulate all of you. We're going to take a big photo with a big group. Be patient with one second. All right, kids, move down. Wayland, let's everybody move down, so you're in front of me. Two steps, two steps. I can see that. One more. One more. We would probably invite you in the middle. So Ivy, I think you might be coming through. I don't know. You're our youngest. One of the dads. She's made a lot of work. There you go. Yeah, okay. One, two, three. One more. Okay. This time, we're going to have all the Rising Star students and all the very important people that they brought with them tonight.
So we'll go ahead and move on to item three. This is Personnel, Superintendent Recommendations, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Mrs. Ronan.
Thank you again, Madam President. 3.01 is our non-renewal resignation section. And as you can see, unfortunately, it's kind of a mixed blessing. We want to congratulate our staff who are leaving us and resigning because many of them are moving on for promotions and other positions. And we want to thank them for their many uses of service, but on the other hand, we feel very, they'll be missed, greatly missed. Now, that was Section 3.01, so we're going to move to Section 3.02. There, we are hiring our coaches for spring and some of our small, fall sports. We want to get an early start. Number two, those are our personnel in, I'm looking to see, number two, actually, we want to welcome our first-year new staff we are hiring. And I understand we have one of them out here in the audience with us tonight. And is that you, Kelly, out there? All right, Kelly.
I like your shirt.
And is struggling with your name, Swartsen Rants? That's?
Schwiggerott.
Schwiggerott, all right. She is going to be teaching preschool with us, so we are delighted to have you with us. I hear you live over there in Oakley, so you can just walk to work. So that is wonderful. So welcome. And we also want to welcome, Lori Davis is not with us tonight, but she's going to be our new Montessori K and 1 teacher. So welcome, welcome to Norwood. Then, number three on the list, these are our teachers who are moving into their second year here at Norwood. And then, item number four, this is the personnel who are moving on to their third year and continuing contract with the district. Number five, we are finalizing staffing for our summer programming, and that includes summer school and summer camp. So that's what's listed there. Number six, these are the supplemental contracts for teachers serving as coaches. Number seven, we also have some staff who need to assist us during the summer, so number seven is the staff for summer employment. Item number eight, that is bringing back our great instructional aids, so they are insured employment for next school year. And with that, thank you, and that concludes the Personnel report.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. So we'll go back under 3.01, Items 1 and 2. These were our non-renewals and resignations. So do I have a motion to accept these non-renewals and resignations?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
No, you do it.
Sure. Don't be funny over now.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. So then, 3.02, this is the employment. So do I have a motion to, I'm sorry, to approve 3.02, Items 1 through 7?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I do just want to make one call out here.
Sure.
So in case anybody has seen Twitter, so the strength and conditioning coach that we're approving here was just on the news for bringing in the Guinness Book of World Records for the world's strongest woman.
Oh.
And we've got her.
She lifted over 2,000 pounds in one afternoon of exercise total. So she set the world record as the strongest woman.
Bench 500, deadlifted 600, and squatted 950.
Yeah. And she's training our kids.
So she's kind of a big deal, huh?
Yeah.
She's kind of a strong deal.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, cool. Any other discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, and then the next section, I don't, I can't see the number, my packet's stapled here. Oh, number eight, okay. So this is the renewal of our student assistance and educational aids. So do I have a motion to renew those?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Abstain.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item four on the agenda, this is the Education Committee, and I will turn the floor over to Mrs. Rarica.
Thank you, Madam President. We have our field trips, that's my absolute favorite, and May is just chock full of them. And I went on one, but we can talk about that later. Sharpsburg Elementary going to Green Acres, Norwood High School, Hamilton County Courthouse. Oh, I heard about that one. My kid was really impressed with how shiny the courthouse was. Sharpsburg Elementary, Cincinnati Zoo, Norwood View Drake Planterium, Norwood View also University of Cincinnati Baseball, and Siemens Manufacturing for their adopt class. And the high school marching band, Wright State University. Do we need to have that on though? No. They're just awesome.
I think we're combining 4-1 to 4-3.
This next one, 4.02, was really exciting, I thought it was really exciting at our committee meeting. We have some new textbooks that we all looked at and we got a presentation on. They're all history and government books. I know we all thought they were really neat for kind of the same reason, even though we all said different things, because they had so many different aspects to them that were so wonderful. You have your textbooks, which are useless these days because they use more online, but the online goes with it. And then, once it's online, you can change the way, the reading level to match your kid, you can change the language to help you, there's all sorts of differentiated things on there to do. It was kind of absolutely mind-blowing to me about all the really awesome things that you could do now to help kids understand what they're reading in text. So I just thought that was so exciting.
And it coordinates with the state testing, the way the tests are given and the state standards, it brings them up to current 2022-2023 material, so it is extremely recent. And the accessibility needs of our students will all be able to be met, super flexible.
Right, yes.
Thank you to the teachers and the team that worked to, you know, do the test run of the materials this year and to review all of the curriculum to be able to present it to us. It didn't have ASL, but it does have closed captioning feature, and again, they can adjust the language as needed as well for ESL learners.
It was pretty fabulous. I really liked it. And then, our 4.03 is our resolution and recognition of teacher and staff appreciation, where we say a lot of wherayses. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, May 9th, and education knowledge lay the foundation of future of our children, and we love teachers and appreciate them because it's long.
Do I have a motion to approve 4.01 through 4.03?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, item five, this is our Policy Committee report. I don't see any policies. Do you have anything to report, Mr. Taylor?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we will move on to number six, Building and Grounds Committee, and I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a couple of items for approval. The first is the use of Shea Stadium for our Norwood Police Department. They're going to be doing some agility testing on May 27th, and then they have a backup brain date scheduled of June 3rd. And the second one is the Fireworks Committee, also using Shea Stadium for the 18th Annual Norwood Hometown Fireworks on Monday, July 4th. That will be from 5:00 to 11:00 PM. And I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve both of these uses.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Okay, continuing on with item seven, this is the Finance Committee report, and I will turn it over to Treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Madam President. 7.01, the monthly financials are attached. The CFO report and the change order listings are all attached for your approval. 7.02, appropriation resolution, our current budget. 7.03, some then-and-now purchase orders for your approval. 7.04, donation from Kroger to Avenue for Success for $1,340.16. 7.05, Agile Blue, a software agreement to provide continuous monitoring services to detect, analyze, and respond to technology security threats. 7.06, Hamilton County ESC, our annual order of services provided by the ESC for the 23-24 school year. 7.07, the Reserve School, to provide services to meet IEP requirements for the summer and next school year. 7.08, social studies textbook purchase for a total cost of $146,676. Much of this cost will be paid for from S.R. funding. 7.09, SWOCA, our annual order of software services provided by SWOCA for the 23-24 school year. 7.10, TriHealth Sports Medicine Agreement. This five-year agreement provides Norwood with sports trainer management for athletic activities at no cost to the district, but does contain a sponsorship agreement bringing $25,000 in revenue over five years to the Norwood Athletic Department. 7.11, five-year forecast, we reviewed the forecast last week, and it is attached along with the assumptions for your approval tonight. 7.10, boiler replacement letter of recommendation and notice to proceed. SHP and John Peter have reviewed the bid document and the references for Triton Services. In SHP's letter, they are recommending we accept the lowest bidder for the boiler replacement, which is Triton Services. Also, you are approving the notice to proceed, which will be sent to Triton and will authorize their work to start. This project will be completed using S.R. funding. 7.13, to accept the winning bid for roof replacement. To accept the lowest bidder from the May 12, 2023 bid opening, HKC Roofing was the winning bidder. SHP and John Peter have met with HKC and reviewed their bid and references. SHP has submitted a letter of recommendation, of which you are also approving, along with the A1A contract to HKC. This is for roof replacement for Williams Elementary in the board office and for View Elementary. Again, this project will be completed using S.R. funding. Finally, 7.14, to accept the winning bid for accounting services. The Auditor of State's office has allowed the district to contract out with an independent accounting firm for its annual audit services. The winning bid goes to Platten Bergen Associates, CPA firm, and will be for a five-year term. The cost for these mandated services comes to just under $22,000 annually and will save us about $5,000 a year. And that is everything for finance.
I see three voting boxes here, Mrs. Camp House. Do we need to do three votes, or should we do it all in one?
I forgot, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
I think we can do the three. I know I did 7.01 to 7.12 because they were pretty routine.
Yes, okay. So do I have a motion to approve 7.01 through 7.12?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Do I have a motion for 7.13? This is the roofing bid for Williams and View.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. And finally, 7.14, this is to accept the winning bid. This is the Auditor of State Office for Financial Services. Do I have a motion for 7.14?
Motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, item eight is the Hearing of the Public, and I do not have any forms, so we will move on. This is number, Section 9, Reports. 9.01, Board Announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Graduation.
Yeah, we have this little thing called graduation on Tuesday.
And Scholarship Day was last week, and that is such a, like, makes flutters in my heart. I love that day. I have so much fun with it. I get to give out some scholarships for the Women's Club, and it's just so special, and it's, and I got, I heard a lot of our residents, parents and non-parents, talking about that. They hear about it now. I don't know if we've, like... talking about that day. I hear about it now. I don't know if we like are just talking about it more or what, but they're like, wait, what? What's, what's about this scholarship foundation? Because it is special. It's not the scholarships that the kids are receiving from schools, which they do that too. This is special, an alumni scholarship foundation. I don't think every school has this. I know the school I went to didn't have it. And they give out over a quarter of a million dollars, and then the kids can get it. After their freshman year, they can keep getting it too. And it's just amazing.
Yep, Ms. Ronan mentioned it, I think in your opening address. I mean, there are very, very few schools in the state of Ohio that do this.
We're probably the only one. It's amazing.
Yes.
Oh, yay, good. I'll spread that word.
And I, I didn't know about it until I had a senior and started to get involved with that, but yeah, it is amazing. And, and I think they even corrected themselves later on. I, I think the number might have been 270 or 275.
Right, I just said over a quarter because I wasn't totally sure of the number, but like, they were like, it was 275, but then there's this four-year scholarship plus these three one-year scholarships. And altogether, that number might be around 360,000.
It, it's an amazing opportunity for our Norwood students.
Especially considering the cost of college these days. So it's a real advantage to graduate from Norwood High School. It's amazing.
Yes. And I do believe like every kid who applies for these scholarships and is eligible to get them, gets them, right?
There, there's a process. They have to be invited to apply, which is based, yeah, yeah, it's, it's based on some things. But yeah, they, they have to be invited to apply, and then they apply, and the committee kind of divvies the money.
Right, and the money's divvied up.
It's a, it's an amazing, amazing program.
I know there was some talk about trade schools too, and I think for some, it hasn't been possible yet, and I know there's, they are working on it. They are very interested in working on it, but for some it is. We had a girl who won one of our scholarships from the Women's Club last year, and she is at the Paul Mitchell Cosmetology School. I, that's a trade school, right? So I think sometimes it is possible to do a trade and they get scholarships. But sometimes, and the other ones where they're not, where they're doing an apprenticeship, they haven't figured that out yet. But I hope they do soon.
Any other board announcements?
We also had our Sharpsburg a couple of weeks ago, and Williams last week did their school carnivals. I got the face paint for them until we got rained out last week. I switched over to glitter tattoos, and everybody enjoyed just playing in the puddles and the rain. And it was those glorious disasters of a rain carnival, because they had a war dunk tank anyway. And then it was, it was so good to just see all the families back out, because we really haven't been able to do these kind of full-force carnivals since COVID. So being able to see all the kids get out and do these activities again.
And the rain really didn't deter them.
It did not at all. You were there too. It was.
Working the bounce house.
My tent should be labeled shade only. It did not get cold. But it was, it was just so great to see them, and they're great fundraisers for the PTAs to go and continue to do stuff for those students. And it was just so much fun.
I saw they had Rosie Red.
Yeah, Rosie Red was at Williams, and she just played in the rain in the gaga pit with the kids, and it was fantastic. They had bounce houses at both of them, and like I said, face painting at both of them, and all snacks and everything. It was just so cool to see, so.
I love going to those. So this year I had to miss because I went on the orchestra field trip. They did their competition in Wilmington at a gorgeous theater, and then they went to Kings Island.
In the rain.
Right, and the rain did not deter very much. I know, at least for me, I was undercover each time that it, and then it just quickly, and then it was over. I was like, this is great. Yeah.
Any other board announcements?
Nope, Little Indians is still taking registrations. Cheer until June 3rd. Get your kiddos signed up.
Anything else? All right, 9.02, this is our Superintendent's Report, so I will turn it over to Ms. Ronan.
Oh, thank you. All right, first up, this was exciting. This was Signing Day 2023. So congratulations to Landon Taylor and Jermell Jackson, both signing with Wittenberg University. And this was a great picture. We caught both young men just as they're signing all that important paperwork. We also have a picture with their families, and there's our Board Vice President, Mike Taylor, seated there. And I'm, I know you're thrilled that your son is getting a, getting a scholarship to a great university. So congratulations to both of these young men. On another note, Tina Akers, the principal of the high school, got the President's Award from the Alumni Association presented by Sharon Hoffman. And there is one of our alumni, Frank Doggett, 1947 graduate. He never misses any of those events, so he was there. Now, the next picture is a great picture of Norwood Middle School students in Washington, D.C. Look at that, there they are in front of the White House. I thought that was a great picture they sent back. And there is a stunning one of them in front of the Capitol. So I mean, that is just a wonderful opportunity for our students to get to see our nation's Capitol and all the monuments. So they are, they're back safely, so that's what I worry about. They have a wonderful time, and then they return to us, and that concludes my report.
On Facebook, you get to see a lot.
So thank you.
Okay. 9.03, this is our Great Oaks Report, and I will turn it over to Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, Madam President. This past meeting, we had the ACTE Region One Awards, and I'm not sure, but Ms. Ronan, you may know her, but Carol Ellis, one of our longtime board members, she served since 1980 with over 42 years of elected service under her belt. She was recognized as the 2023 School Board Recognition Award for Region One, so we were honoring her. Our Diversity and Unity Committee members collected research from across the country that is going to help kick off next month's discussion about potentially develop, developing a formal DEI statement or policy for the Great Oaks districts. The Great Oaks Outstanding Student Recognition Dinner was also held prior to our last board meeting, which was May 10. Senior students from all four campuses were recognized, including one of our very own Norwood students, Carlos Ortiz. Carlos is a Norwood wrestler and a football player who was recognized for winning an award in the pharmacy category during the most recent HOSA competition. He has been accepted to UC and will begin in the fall, so congratulations to Carlos. Our graduation ceremony for students attending Scarlet's campus will be held next Monday, the 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. at Fifth Third Arena on UC's campus. Parking information and information about approved bags and purses is available on UC's website under Fifth Third Arena Information. So there are, there are things that they have to follow if parents want to go to that, but it's on Monday, and again, information is on the website. Our scholarships for the amount earned will be announced at that ceremony, so we don't know yet how much our students have gotten, but I know it's always really high. We do a lot of scholarships for our kiddos too there. So congratulations to those kids, and especially to Carlos, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fowler. 9.04, this is Norwood Community Television, and I have a brief update. They had a screening last Monday for the middle school club where they watched all the things they produced this year. We had two narrative shorts, a couple of stop-motion Lego micro shorts, a documentary short, and the only existing scene from an unproduced film about depressed aliens. So mental health is important even for aliens, and the students enjoyed seeing their work. And then Tyler says they also have been getting ready for Tuesday, of course, where they'll be covering graduation, as well as a recital from the Orchestra Club. So that's what's going on with NCT right now. 9.05, this is the OSBA Legislative Liaison, and I will turn it over again to Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of items before we get to the one thing that's in, in your computer. First, the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee had its second hearing on House Bill 117, which would eliminate retention under the third grade reading guarantee and expand the grades for which intensive reading intervention is provided. The bill also modifies the English Language Arts Assessment to be administered once in the third grade and expands the inclusion of phonics in learning standards. The committee also held sponsored testimony for House Bill 103, which would establish the Ohio Social Studies Standard Tax Force to develop new social studies academic standards for use beginning in 24, 25 school years. So we are ahead of House Bill 103, so I'm very proud of that. The House and Ways and Means Committee held a sponsorship testimony for Senate Bill 43, and that would modify the homestead exemption for surviving spouse of disabled veterans. So that could affect some of our taxes in relation to the homestead exemption. There's also a brand-new bill being introduced, 164. It establishes the Foster to College Scholarship Program. The bill requires the Department of Education to hire a full-time school foster care liaison and make an appropriation for foster to college scholarships programming. So that'll be upcoming, and hopefully we'll learn some more about that. In, we do have one item to vote on. This is the resolution that I had brought up at last week's meeting. I really want to thank Ms. Justin and Ms. Havlin for the work that they put in to help me get this written in time. And this was discussed briefly about expanding the potential for our graduation requirements to include those students who have an IEP and have previously not been counted as graduates. We want them to count, so this resolution helps establish some language changes that we can present to OSBA, and hopefully eventually that will get turned into a bill and become effective for the state of Ohio. I'm going to go ahead and read that, read that now. "The Resolution Recommending Amendment to the Ohio School Board Association 2023 Legislative Platform." Whereas Norwood City School District is a member of the Ohio School Board Association, OSBA, and whereas the OSBA advocates through a legislative platform that it is reviewed and amended each year by OSBA member districts, and whereas the current legislative platform contains language related to graduation calculations for students with disabilities on an IEP. And Ohio Revised Code currently outlines legislation that allows students to defer their diploma if determined by their IEP, but in doing so, the student is not considered a graduate until the deferment is complete. And now therefore be it resolved, on May 18th, 2023, the Norwood City School District Board of Education recommends the following language changes be added to the legislative platform under the graduation rate referenced in Ohio Revised Code 3313.61 and 3325.08. OSBA supports legislation that allows students with disabilities on an IEP who have met all graduation requirements and who wish to continue their education or defer their diploma to count as a graduate using the graduation rate formula for their school and district, and allows students with disabilities on an IEP who continue their education or defer their diploma to maintain all supports provided by federal law. I would like to move that we accept this resolution as presented.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
I do. So the first one is a point of order, and I didn't catch this before the meeting started, otherwise I would have amended the agenda. So this should not live in the report section. This actually should have went into, into the, into the policy section. But, because normally we don't have discussion during reports, it's just us just kind of giving updates. But be that as it may, it's here, and we're going to vote on it, and you know, it's fine. But you know, just, just keep in mind that typically it's not normal to have motions to vote on, on items in the report section of, of an agenda. And I do want to say that this is a couple of years in the making, you know, this started, oh, probably two or three years ago when we went to Columbus and testified before a joint House Committee about another topic. So that was the expansion of ed choice. But at that time, ed choice was being determined on your, the school's grade. And the school's grade is determined by one of the primary components, which is the graduation rate. And for a district like ours, you know, five, seven kids can drastically affect the school's grade. It could just drop it by two or three letter grades by itself, even though those kids meet all the criteria for graduation, go to their pathway programming, but because that's not aligned in the four or five-year cohort, by the time they finish that and get their diploma that they were eligible in year four, they don't count as a graduate under the wording that the state currently has, and it's just a travesty. So I'm hoping that, that this is taken up, and I'm hoping that the legislation moves forward with it, because it's way, way, way past due.
I've got some folks in the Representatives' Office that are willing to look at this. So I, I want to get it to OSBA so that they can back it, because it has to be to them first, and then that's the next step. So I've got some folks in line waiting their turn, so we just have to get it up to them.
Right.
Any other discussion?
Thanks for doing the legislative work. This is a big passion for me, like, oh, yes, good.
And we talked, if anybody's watching and interested, we talked about this in more depth at the committee meeting, if you want to listen to more of that discussion, but anything else? All right, Ms. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Ms. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes. Okay, and now we will move on to 9.06, Avenue for Success, and I will turn it over to Ms. Rarica.
Well, thank you, Madam President. The clubs for the year have wrapped up, and it was a fabulous year. I know I got a lot of flower arrangements for my kid, and we heard about the filmmaking kids, and I have another kid who sewed a bunch of stuff, oh, and decorated a lot of cupcakes. And they're looking forward to getting Blast Off Summer Camp, did I name it right, started. So if you need to sign up, please get ahold of Loa Ferguson at Avenue for Success and get your kid signed up for Blast Off for Summer.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rarica. Item 10 on the agenda, this is Meeting Notifications, 10.01, Approval of Future Meetings. So our next committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 13th at the Board Office. And then because we are in summer, the, the regular board meeting will also be at the Board Office. And do note the date of the regular meeting, it is Thursday, June 29th, so I believe that's a week beyond what we would normally do.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, two weeks.
That's pretty, what was the reason?
Only because, I think.
Finance.
Yeah, it's, it just shifted how the finances are coming in, so, but the first is a Thursday, so it throws off the month of July's a little, or June is a little wonky.
Do I have a motion to approve the meetings as listed?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Ms. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes. All right, item 11, this is our closing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and with that, we are adjourned at 6:49. Thank you.